Mr. Mayor, you want to come on this side? Mr. Mayor. And Council President. Goodbye, sir. Good afternoon. I am Attorney Ben Crump, along with Attorney Chris Stewart, Attorney Tony Romanucci, Attorney Justin Miller, Attorney Scott Matheson, Attorney Michelle Gudno, Attorney Jeff Storms, Attorney Bavani, and I'm just Attorney Madeline Simmons, and a great team of lawyers on our team. We are honored to stand here with the family of George Floyd, his brothers and sisters, his children, all his family, his daughter Gianna. We are very grateful to stand here at this historic moment in the city of Minneapolis. We are very thankful to the leadership of the city of Minneapolis, and I will talk about that momentarily. But we want to start from the beginning. When George Floyd was horrifically killed on May 25th, 2020, it was a watershed moment for America. It was one of the most egregious and shocking documentations of an American citizen being tortured to death by a police officer for having his knee on his neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds. One of the worst ever witnessed in history. And history will judge us for how we responded to this tragedy. History will judge us on our commitment to the principles of equality in response to this tragedy. History will judge us on our commitment to the principles of justice or how we responded to this tragedy. And most of all, history will judge us on our commitment to our principles of humanity of how we responded to this tragedy. And Mayor Frye, history won't judge us just based on the eloquence of our words, but by the power of our actions. Council President Bender, when this tragedy happened and after the family had an independent autopsy and we were waiting to have the home-going services for George Floyd, President Joseph Biden and former Louisiana Congressman Cedric Richmond, you remember, Chris, came to meet with the family of George Floyd. And his family, his sisters and brothers, his daughter Gianna was there. And the one thing I remember for loners about that was sharing with President Biden what me and my eight-year-old daughter Brooklyn often talk about. And I tell her in life, it's not just enough to say you care, but you must show you care by your actions. And I remember talking with Rodney and Felonous and all of them by our side in that very emotional meeting as President Biden shared his empathy for the family and losing a loved one. I remember talking to him about what I talked to my daughter Brooklyn about. It's not just enough for America to say that George Floyd life matters. We have to show that George Floyd life matters by our actions. It's not just enough for America to say that black lives matter. We have to show that black lives matter by our actions. So the family of George Floyd and our legal team are very grateful to Mayor Frye and the city council for not just saying you care about George Floyd, but showing that you care about George Floyd. Not just saying that black lives matter, but showing to the world that black lives matter. And we are very grateful and we applaud you for this great step of showing the world responsible leadership. The leaders of the city of Minneapolis have demonstrated by their actions and their commitment to equality, justice, and humanity. Today, they have shown that the life of George Floyd and black lives matter to them. To the people of Minneapolis and on behalf of George Floyd's family, we applaud this responsible city leadership. And we urge everybody to practice responsible leadership in remaining calm and engaging in peaceful protests for George Floyd and reflecting the same humanity of the man that we are remembering and honoring today in George Perry Floyd. Because Brandon, I think it may have been on one of the social media posts, and I know you and he talk regularly on social media and texts. George Floyd himself during the Ferguson unrest after Michael Brown was killed by the police there and everybody was saying, "Hands up, don't shoot." George Floyd shared on social media that everybody needs to remain peaceful as we stand up for justice for Michael Brown. So we urge everybody in Minneapolis, everybody at 38th and Chicago, everybody around the world, let's follow George Floyd's example in being peaceful as we stand up for justice. Can we all do that? Can we all do that for George Floyd? Can we all do that for our children? It is my great honor to announce that George Floyd's family, our legal team, and the city of Minneapolis and its leaders have settled the civil lawsuit in the death of George Floyd. The settlement is not just historic because of the $27 million paid out, but for the impact on social justice, policy reforms, and police reforms. Because the financial compensation most directly impact George Floyd and his family, the future of their family. But it is the policy reforms that affects all of us. And many would say that's why the George Floyd Act, whether it's here in Minneapolis, Mayor Frye, or the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act, Councilman Ellison, that is being contemplated in Washington, DC, it impacts all of us, all of us. And that's why this is so historic and significant. I must again really acknowledge Mayor Jacob Frye, Council President Lisa Bender, Councilman Jeremiah Ellison, and my dear friend, Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins, for their extraordinary leadership to bring justice and change out of this terrible tragedy. For the city's leaders and their lawyers, especially their city attorney Jim Rutter, the Floyd family, and our legal team to reach this historic settlement, it says to America that we can do more than just point fingers, accuse one another, and engage in more division. We can actually come together and make things better. We can reach an agreement about what form justice might take, not wait for it to be determined only by a historical discriminatory criminal justice system. But responsible leadership says we do what we can to try to determine how we make a better world for all of our children. After the eyes of the world rested on Minneapolis in its darkest hour, now the city can be a beacon of hope and light and change for cities across America and across the globe. This would not have been possible, would not have happened without the extraordinary progressive and deeply moral leadership of this city council and its mayor. And for that, we do applaud you publicly as we have applauded you privately. I look at Felonous and Brandon and Rodney, and I'm thinking of Bridgette and JaJa, as well as Latanya, especially Gianna and their other loved ones. And I think about George Floyd. And I pray for them on this journey for justice as I implore you all to pray for them. I mean, it's going to be a long journey, a long journey to justice. This is but one step on the journey to justice. We have to remember in the 10 months since we learned his name, we have come to know George Floyd as a larger-than-life figure, literally, with an even larger personality. And Tony Romanucci, as we learnt, with an even bigger heart. George Floyd knew that being a large, imposing black man made him a target and put him at risk. That's why, Chris, he tried to de-escalate the situation that day. Corin, he was assuring the officers that he was not resisting and that he did not pose a threat. And Justin, he was literally doing what black people do on a daily basis in America when they have encounters with law enforcement. We try to tell them that we're legitimate people. Arthur Reed, we try to tell them, we're not the type of person that you are prejudging me to be. We are people, human beings, just like you. And we just want to be treated like you treat others. That's what George Floyd was doing. He wasn't posing a threat. You look at that video for yourself. Why would they do that to a human being? George Floyd had more witnesses to his torture and death than any other person, black or white, in American history. Over 50 million people have clicked to watch that video. And once you see that video, you can never unsee that video. And that's why George Floyd is changing the world. Because we know, America, we're better than this. We know, America, that we're more just than this. We know, America, that we're more humane than this. And this historic agreement, the largest pre-trial settlement in a police civil rights wrongful death case in US history, makes a statement that George Floyd deserved better than what we witnessed on May 25th, 2020. That George Floyd life matters. And by extension, black lives matter. It sends a message that the unjust taking of black life will no longer be written off as trivial, unimportant, or unworthy of consequences. And I digress just for a moment as we acknowledge this historic milestone to recognize that tomorrow will mark the one-year passage of time since our sister Breonna Taylor was killed in Louisville, Kentucky. And the fact that her and George Floyd will be forever linked in history as two people who were taken from us at the hands of the people who were supposed to protect them, serve them during the COVID-19 pandemic, where it seems like everything else in America has shut down except implicit bias and police excessive use of force. And so, Felonous, I know you and Rodney have just spoke with Tamika Palmer, or text with Tamika Palmer, Breonna's mother. And it just demonstrates for all of us, we're inconceivably linked together as not just black people, not just as Americans, but as human beings. And we have empathy for one another. She was celebrating and congratulating the Floyd family, even though she's dealing with what only one could imagine is the worst nightmare any parent could ever conceive. And so, nothing will ever wipe out the Floyd's family aching loss. But this settlement and the respect this shows the family will allow healing to begin, Council President Bender. It will help to heal the city of Minneapolis and the minds and hearts of black and white people who still suffer anxiety and nightmares and post-traumatic stress from watching the eight minutes and 46 seconds of George Floyd tortured and killed at the hands of those who were supposed to protect and serve them. Those 526 seconds is enough to cause anybody post-traumatic stress. And we say to everybody, black, white, brown, and red, we're better than this. We're better than those 526 seconds. Mayor Frye, as we talked about, a man begging for just humanity, just taking a knee off his neck. As you will hear more in a minute, this city has already enacted some very profound model police reforms in the wake of George Floyd's death. Our legal team is committed to support the city in pushing through additional reforms, Mayor Frye, to ensure that they can hold officers accountable for bad conduct and never let a union contract force them into having to tolerate bad policing. We have to speak truth to power. George Floyd deserves that. Breonna Taylor deserves that. Mayor Frye, you have our word, our voices, and our might to help you muscle through additional changes that will transform policing in Minneapolis and hopefully policing in America, Councilman Ellison, Council Vice President Jenkins, Council President Bender. And I say this to our national leaders, we hope the example that you all are setting here in Minneapolis will inspire and embolden the United States Senate to join their colleagues in the United States House of Representatives led by the Congressional Black Caucus in passing meaningful reform legislation in the name of George Floyd. As Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee reminds us, the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. Because like the activists say his name in the halls of Congress, with the passage of that legislation, they will always say George Floyd's name. Finally, Corin, I am most proud with the family and our legal team of the leadership of Mayor Frye, Council President Bender, Councilman Ellison, and Vice President Jenkins for engaging in a partnership with the family that they can take the lead on being able to contribute $500,000 of this settlement to be committed to help lift up the historically black neighborhood that engulfs 38th and Chicago Avenue, where George Floyd lived and died while he was here in Minneapolis, be able to uplift the black businesses that have suffered, Vice President Jenkins, such a toll in the past 10 months. For the past 10 months, people came to 38th and Chicago to lay down flowers and pay their respects. I believe people, Chris, will always come to 38th and Chicago. But they will come to remember George Floyd. But I pray that we can make this memorial more than just that. Felonous, we want to imagine if in the future, because of your family's help and commitment and giving back to this community, that when people come to 38th and Chicago, they will witness a marker of a turning point in civil rights. They will learn more about black history. They will support the thriving black businesses that were able to survive not only COVID, but this terrible tragedy where George Floyd was killed. And they will be able to celebrate black culture. This is our vision, united, the family and the city leadership. This is the family's belief what is proper in preserving the legacy of George Floyd here in Minneapolis. It was his daughter Gianna who said her daddy changed the world. And I know her mother, Roxy, and everybody know that he certainly has. I thank the leadership of the city of Minneapolis for elevating and memorializing George Floyd's legacy today and making a statement in the clearest terms possible. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. At this time, you will get to hear from two of the most passionate, committed, skillful, and are just skilled beyond anything that you would imagine in your local community. But they're not just good because they care about the court cases. They are skilled because they truly care about their clients. You will hear from my brother Chris Stewart, who hails from Atlanta, Georgia. And then you will hear from my brother Tony Romanucci, who hails from Chicago, Illinois. Chris Stewart, love you.
It's something that the two most viral videos that deal with George Floyd are his death and life. The video of Gianna Floyd saying, "My daddy will change the world." And who would have known that from the mouth of a babe, it would actually come true? Who would have known what that change would be? Because it's not just a large financial number. It's deeper than that. The number today changes evaluations in civil rights for a black person when they die. Because what you don't know is the rigged game that we always have to play when we take one of these cases. Because African-Americans are not valued high when they are murdered by law enforcement in these cases. And we are changing that precedent. Because as we told you when we filed this lawsuit six, seven months ago, we are here to support the actual understanding that black lives matter. But you will start understanding that black value matters. And what happens is that trickles down to decisions in the communities across this country. When there's a city council or a mayor deciding, "Oh, should we get rid of no-knock warrants? Should we get rid of chokeholds? Do we want to change these policies?" They have 27 million reasons now why they should. And that will make decisions happen. That will make accountability happen. Because yes, it's sad seeing a video of a man being tortured and murdered, but it's worse having to write a check to take care of something that should have been prevented in other cities. And that's why this is a blueprint, and this doesn't happen often. You don't get a city council that cares. I know I run into a lot that don't. You don't get a mayor that will step out there and risk himself to try and get this done with city council. You don't get a city attorney who actually worked with us and it wasn't a fight all the time. That should be a blueprint across this country. I tried to say that in Walter Scott years ago. Here is a blueprint. We changed policies. There was a record number. We worked together. We held the demonstrations peacefully. And change happened in that area. What will happen here? And what will happen across this country? Because understand that this isn't over. Those officers will be held accountable. There is a prosecution team that actually cares and is fighting. And if you need a reminder, just think of the George Floyd case. And that if you don't get policing correct, if you don't make these changes, if you don't fix the policies that are happening, then you'll be seeing us again. Because we are making sure that black lives and black value will be understood. It was an honor fighting for this family, fighting for Gianna. She had school, and she could not be here with her mother. There's been no bigger joy in my life working with Ben. There's been no bigger joy in my life, working with Ben and fighting for not just the man, George Floyd, but the purpose of what George Floyd changed will become across this country. Increasing policing, making it better, and understanding the value that will be assigned to African-Americans in these cases. Thank you all.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Antonio Romanucci. Everybody calls me Tony. I'm from Chicago, Illinois. I'm one of the attorneys of the George Floyd family and hope again to introduce the entire legal team soon. I do want to thank my esteemed co-council who spoke before me, my brother Ben Crump, Chris Stewart. I do want to take a special moment to thank Mayor Jacob Frye, the city council. I want to acknowledge you now and again later. I have some special remarks. And of course, the city attorney Jim Router, and also the city attorneys Brian Carter and Tracy Fussi for working together. And I want to bring you back just for a moment now to May 24. George had no idea, he had no clue, that when he laid down for rest that night and he closed his eyes, that the following day would be his last, that he would breathe. He didn't know that the last two words that he would utter on this earth, "Mama", "Mama", would not only be his last words, but would actually be the words of a messenger. Because what you see here on this stage today doesn't happen. You don't see a concert of people who sit across the table from each other and typically fight it out in a courtroom standing here together, not so much proudly announcing, but in partnership announcing a very historic settlement. And as Chris said, the amount may be historic. I know Ben pointed it out. But really, the historic part of it will be in the change that George Floyd brought about. George doesn't know what he has accomplished and what he has done. But his family are going to be his rays that will continue to shine down upon us all and ensure that his name will never be forgotten and will be inscripted with permanent change, not only in this city, but in this state, but also our country. And it can't happen without this community that's standing on this stage. We are so pleased that this settlement includes $500,000, which will be funneled to some of the most needy and important businesses of the neighborhood of 38th and Chicago. We will see that that money gets spent in the right businesses, the right areas of that community. This case has been set as a watershed event for civil rights in America and around the world. And it does. It does. I can tell you that the feeling does feel that this is a turning point for police reform and changes. But that's only because, only because there were conscious choices that were made to do so. Because this wasn't just, or will be, a check that's written. There is a lot of branch such as Mayor Frye to do the right thing. Police in Minneapolis, they need to commit themselves to substantial improvements in culture and practices. Now, this is also a wake-up call to every police department around the nation to make swift change. Because if you don't make swift change, what happens?